Good evening and welcome to today's work session. Today is May, Monday, May the 24th, 24th, 2021. The time is now 5:00 P. M. The work session of the City Council and the City of Trinidad will now come to order. And we also have it through Zoom for those that are listening in today. We have some items to discuss tonight. One is Ia Trinidad Community Foundation Grant Review. Item two is discussion regarding possible property purchase. Item three is memorandum of understanding between Los Angeles County, City of Trinidad, Nature Conservancy, Trust for Public Lands for the Fisher's Peak Recreation Plan and Impact Study. Item four is discussion regarding new public health orders. And item five, direction regarding retreat. And there are a couple of other items I think you wanted to discuss that came up with 238. So we'll do with 238. So let's go ahead and get started with the Trinidad Community Foundation Grant Review. Colonel Simpelman, are you listening in with us tonight?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. And Lisa Camarillo, our president.
Hi, Frank.
Who should be here shortly. She had a meeting, she said she was gonna run, but had to be just to kind of kick things off that allocated to you. So I guess from our perspective, we want to thank the city for allowing the Trinidad Community Foundation to escort the city grant funding process this year. We recognize that this is an honor that includes the responsibility of U.S. Council and multiple parties with city taxpayers. This year, we received 21 grant applications, although all of them were at merit, working or outstanding. We recommend for funding. And that we have the summaries in the attachment. One attachment is a high level, as you can see, just says this is how much the request is and basically how much we recommend. The other has a few more details to give you some idea on what each request included. And we want to point out that this time that we had the Trinidad Triggers, who submitted a grant request, to withdraw their request because we, the TCF, would like to be a sponsor for the Triggers. So, you know, if we take them, pull that $2,000 request out there, then lose our funds to, you know, that gets our name out there, and that's certainly something that we feel is part of our mission. So really what it comes down to is that rather than recommending not funding seven, although that's true, one of them will get funded and that would be by us. We want to point out that your continuing, the council's continuing support of the nonprofit community is an excellent example of working together, the local government, you know, just talking to a tourist today and have somehow, some way about five or six years ago, the city government, you know, government, business, nonprofits, had this brilliant idea that if we work together, magic things can happen. And I think we're seeing the fruits of that today because it is, I think, I think we have a lot to be proud of. So the only other thing I would like to point out at this time is that, you know, we did not just bring the whole funds. We still have some funds that, 19,500. We will run another cycle. We will do what you want to do, let me put it that way. We will run another grant cycle here, and I think with the pandemic slowing down and people able to get out, do more things, I think we'll have another round of good legitimate solid requests that can help out the community. Also, you might consider, and I highly recommend that you consider, that you can say paying somebody, you know, the amount, I'm not going to say it because I don't know, but somebody has a donor advised fund, a city donor advised fund. Now, that does take the money off of your books, puts it here. We have no control over that money. We can't spend a dime of it without you directing us to do it. But this day, something came up. I used to have a trail case as an example. Something came up and you wanted a quick response to give somebody a $2,000, just a resolution, and we'll have an authorization, authorized agent, say Audrey or somebody, you know, send us an email to give this organization $2,000 for this purpose. And then we would handle it the same way as the grant. It depends by how they spend money on that. But that's your money. It's not ours. We can't touch it. So it could sit there forever, frankly. But think about that. And now that I assumed that practically legal as far as the city's concerned, and certainly, I don't see any reason that that could not be done. Yeah, I haven't said all of that. Are there any questions?
Let's get some questions from council. Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions?
For the agencies that are recommended to do not fund, what consideration was used to make that decision?
Good question. And we have the criteria of, you know, the grants have to tell how they're going to use the money specifically, you know. So we know, we know, this could make the ABC disability group, you know, again, a great cause and all that, but they just couldn't tell us how they were going to use the money. Okay, it was kind of, it's not going to be a question really, anything like that. And it's just that, you know, we didn't have specifics on how they were going to use it. We are okay. They came down to that that was for operational costs. And we just don't do that manner. It's just too hard to track. That's where we have, that's where we can experience some difficulties. So we tend not to do operational costs. Now, you know, they have the option of using some of their money for operations. And, you know, the program money, say, maybe they can use for operations and other.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd just like to know one thing, you know, not only being on the city council, but my previous years being involved in the community, one thing that's pretty obvious with the law of philanthropic groups is not to fund for operations. That's a big thing that.
I think, I think that's a good answer. And just, I feel comfortable as long as we have something that's uniformly applied that as well within our purview. So it makes good sense.
Mr. Goodall.
Thank you.
So Mr. Simpelman, looking at, you know, this first go around of funds and your vetting process and your recommendations, I think just goes to further prove the wise decision we made to handing this off to you and allowing you all to relieve us of this and staff of this continuous request for funding. I appreciate what you're doing very much and I like what I see.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I would say we give her, unless, I get the thing else, we go back and look at processes. I think the next go around, we decided that we can cut the time by having people come in and, you know, we can get a deal. Because it's not a contest. It's not, you know, we want everybody to succeed, frankly. So if we, we'll make sure, like some of these people that didn't get it this time, we'll make sure that we educate them so that they'll get better requests next time. And I appreciate your comments.
You bet.
And all the groups are fine, and if we've got records related, I mean, a record then to find whatever. Yeah, we've got a couple that it's tough to get information on, but we've got, we've got. That's where the work goes.
Mr. DeBonnie.
Hi, Colonel. How much money is allocated to the Trinidad Triggers this year?
That I really don't know. Oh, you mean from the TCF?
Yes.
Oh, okay. We're going to give them a couple thousand. And what they give the grant request, they, they, and it's the same thing. It's really what it is, if you want to look at it, we took some money with a fee that we're just taking some of that and supporting a community asset. So it's, but then we're, we already said we'll sponsor, you know, $2,000, that, that.
Okay.
Now, the total, I don't know. I don't have that right now.
Mr. Shu.
You want to run some questions other than, I think you guys are doing a good job. I agree with Rusty and go with that.
Thank you.
So Ogletree.
I grant the comments already. I have a couple of questions. When is the next round that you'll be considering?
Oh, when would it be considered? As soon as possible. I would like to see it kick off at least, you know, the advertising that sort of by middle of late June. I mean, I, I mean, I, you know, we're pressing some people working pretty hard. But I think one July, I mean, you know, early July is later. And we'll give people, again, a couple of weeks to write it. So I, people need the money. I want to get it out there like you with as soon as possible.
Okay, so not just quarterly. You're going to do it more often than that?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
You know, as soon as we can look at our schedule and get it done, you know, we'll, we'll do it as soon as possible.
Okay, and then I just was curious, what in the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Cinco de Mayo event, what does overcome by the calendar mean?
Oh, just Cinco de Mayo is on the fifth of May.
Okay.
No, they're going to come in and ask for next year.
Okay, so they're not going to consider an alternative date or something?
No, no, yes.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colonel, thank you for, you know, like I said, like Rusty said, taking the work off, workload off of the city council. That was proposed, that was proposed a few years ago, and it's worked out well and continues to work. So thank you and the people from the TCF that worked on this to distribute the money into the community as you see fit. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I forgot one thing, you know, and if that is directed at you, I, but when we distribute the check, which again, we want to do as soon as possible, you know, it's a city's money. We should have city representation and anybody we like. We could talk with you as to where and when we'll distribute that fund. But if we did it at our offices or in Philmont, if we did it here, you know, we could have some refreshments and cookies and, you know, light punch and stuff like that. If people come in and if your money and the city should be, we make sure that everybody knows it's your money. But when we start making pictures and press for writing about it, you know, the city should get the credit, not us.
Well, just let us know what date the distribution of those checks would be. And you mentioned earlier about a possible donor advised fund. And I'm not sure if council wants to discuss that now or. Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions on it?
I do not, no.
Rusty.
Well, I don't know. I think maybe we should have a discussion about that and see how that works. Because I think the city, I know that Mike has plenty of work to do, but at his discretion if something was to pop up, he has the ability to authorize certain amount of expenditures. But I think some discussion amongst council about that would be good.
Mr. Shu.
I really don't have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I had just a, maybe, talk with, or comment.
Are you, are you saying, is Colonel Simpelman still there?
Colonel.
Okay. Are you saying that you want the city to give TCF some direction about how to spend money or to hold back some money that city council would just award based on some urgent situation or something?
Yeah, they would either add or just, I mean, you give us direction anytime, you know, I'd want to stand. But just give you flexibility, if you want it. On the other hand, I was talking to Mike Valentine, you know, when you, I don't know if you're going to vote to approve or tip, but I would approve, I would vote, I would suggest that you vote to accept our recommendation. And if anybody comes up and starts pounding on your debt, you cannot duck, you know, that's what, that's our dog. But think you know, take the pressure off of you guys and keep talking about some jerks over there, you know.
Mr. Valentine, do you have any question on that, Colonel Williamson?
No, I think it's a, it's a great idea. We get requests all the time. But then again, we want it to be projects and not, you know, operational. So I think it's a great idea. And if somebody contacts the city, I would definitely run by everyone before I said, yeah, go. And then we could direct the foundation to kind of administer that.
Do you think Sherwood would have any question on that?
Um, she might. I've got to talk to her about it.
Why don't you just do that with her and see what, if she has any questions or any concerns.
Right.
Okay. All right. Colonel Simpelman, thank you for the information and good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So.
I just want to ask, for one second, does council feel like they need to have this on a regular agenda to have to vote on it? Or I don't know that some services are always being tested. I guess the council wanted to take it up to.
I don't really think that we need to vote on it.
Something, but I don't know if it's necessary to vote on it.
Ms. Garrett, I don't believe that it's necessary because we've allocated that money to, for them to to disperse the money as they, as they see fit. And he's, Colonel has just given us a report of how they're going to distribute that money. So I don't really believe that we need to put it as an agenda item moving forward.
I agree. I think.
Will you go ahead?
Yes. I think as the Colonel mentioned, I think the consensus is city, the council accepts their recommendations. So I think we're good.
I think we're good. Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you.
Okay, item two, discussion regarding possible property purchase. Mr. Valentine, what do you got?
So there's a couple maps and I hopefully, Mr. Pearl from the gas utility director is on the call. But just to set it up briefly.
I'm here, Mike.
Good. Jump in here in a minute, Steve. Steve was approached by the owner of the property that's adjacent to the gas shop. And it's been for sale for a while. And there's, there's an opportunity. Part of, part of the issue is if you look at the map, gosh, I wish we could have it on screen. But if you look at the map, there's this yellow portion in your pocket that kind of butts our gas shop, which if somebody were to fence it off and close it off, it would render that side of the gas shop not usable. The current owner has worked with the city, but it's been for sale and we've had some inquiries. We're, we are considering it and for several reasons. For that sliver, for the building that is there, there's one building that's usable for storage. And then for either a city impound yard, for housing, for parking, for across the street where the space grid is. Thank you for ever put that on screen, Audra. Or, you know, we're, we're doing this river visioning and we could split that up and possibly have kind of a trailhead there or something, so.
And that's the part in red, correct?
Um, correct.
Okay.
On that map, the overall area is the green and the yellow. And I'll turn it over to Steve if you have anything to add, Steve.
Yeah, I would just like to ask, if you purchased that section in yellow, Martin's gas shop is what really needs to get. I've asked Mr. Parsons if he was, he willing to split that property and we could just purchase that section. He said he wouldn't at this time. He wants to sell the whole thing. He informed me that he's had a few serious inquiries about it. One was of a contingency of somebody's property selling, which didn't sell. So that comes out through, but the guy's still interested. And he has another one that would get close to making a contract on it. So I was just wanting to move forward with this and see before somebody does buy it, fences off that section, or they have the city over a barrel and want us to pay them a ransom for that section. If we do lose that section of property right there, we have trailers and trucks and pipe stored on that area. We'd no longer be able to do that. So we lose a lot of our yard space that we're using right now.
So Mr. Valentine, the funding would come from where? Because it's shorter than 12,000?
12,000. We have a line item for property acquisition, but initially the gas department would purchase it. Something we failed to mention is if we, if council is amenable, we will make an offer contingent on Phase One environmental on, on the area. Because everybody knows that that was Star Texas Co. bulk plant. So we're told, and they have paperwork of the tanks being removed, but we want to ensure that we're not buying, you know, problems.
If that were to happen, is there a possibility, of course, to, in the future, to go after like a brownfield grant?
Well, we've already talked to Georgie since we received the grant for extension of the brownfield. We could, this would fit in there.
Okay. Mike, when we were on council, we had talked about that before. And I think the city manager had some information on that. There was some problems there with the gas and oil and stuff that they were going to have to clean it up, decontaminate. I don't know if you still have that information or something.
Well, yeah, the current owner has information that the tanks were removed in. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, 1998, the tanks were.
99.
99. Well, the tanks were.
Yeah, and they were closed off in January of 2000.
So it might be that that's what was.
There were three underground storage tanks that were removed.
Yeah.
And then they were back built. The report is kind of vague. It doesn't go into a lot of detail. Says that the tanks showed no leakage. They were geographically protected and there was some, some corrosion on the tanks, but nothing serious. And that, that's about all that the report shows. Just wasn't too much heat killed by soil.
Did we have propane tanks stored there for a while?
And they were farther to the west.
Yeah.
Yeah, and those have been removed.
Was this out of our lands or was that over?
Those were in actually Cedar Street right of way. And that was, and that's still our right of way, where the walking trail goes by that seeing propane tank. The tanks are gone, but the building is still, yeah.
With Valentine being that the owner's, you know, I'm not sure if he's willing to give us a clean bill of health on that property or not.
I think pending.
I think we need to rely on the Phase One, I think.
Yeah. Let's get some questions. Mr. Williamson.
I have no questions past what we've been discussing. I mean, I think that Phase One would be super critical. And Mike, I know the frequency of soil collections dependent on what they expected or historical use has been. But we might go above and beyond just to ensure that, I mean, an adequate soil sample is taken. Because I'd be, I mean, I've seen Phase One have been, you know, improperly applied. And, you know, you find out the real problems after. So I think we should, we should feel, well, when I say we, you should feel comfortable with the selection of a Phase One, you know, pothole and soil samples.
Mr. Goodall.
So, so with current market values, 1.63 acres, $212,000, it seemed to fall within.
It, it does. $3 an acre.
$3, yeah.
Square foot, you mean?
I mean.
A square. I'm buying that tomorrow.
Mike's not going to get a map.
That's right.
Okay, Mr. Goodall.
Are there any water drainage issues that the city should be aware of?
Steve, did you hear the question?
Are there any water drainage issues that the city should be aware of?
No, the whole years that we've been there, been there to digest that gas shop for about 20 years there. And in that property, we've never seen any water issues. We've been there since some heavy snowstorms and heavy rainstorms and no issues with water drainage yet.
That's because of the excellent erection of that building. The guy who put that up knew what he was doing.
Put it up on snow.
Put it up on snow?
Yeah.
Mr. Shu, any other questions? Ms. Ogletree.
So the satellite picture that we have, that's not what's on the screen, but the satellite picture that we have doesn't show art spaces across the street from the area inserted by red. Is that correct?
Correct. So.
Yeah, correct.
Art space was built in this lot here.
Okay, and right now you absolutely need the part that's outlined in yellow, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And part of the red is what you're needing for, is that turnaround space or is it storage? Or I'm just trying to understand which part of it you think you would use.
The two little buildings that are west of the gas shop in the red, it's kind of fenced off. You can see a little bit of an outline on the west side of the building.
Yeah.
I'd be interested in keeping that for the gas departments. But, you know, we could kind of fence it off just a little bit wherever. So it's not at an angle, but there's a triangle there. I'd like to have the building as a storage building. We're kind of limiting it in our indoor storage, and we're trying to get it filled up right now.
Okay.
So those storage buildings would come in handy for us. And then the rest of it, like Mike was saying, we could use that for parkings or something with the Riverwalk, incorporate that into the Riverwalk.
Okay.
And we could even, oh, do I have?
I just was going to say that the only concern that I'm having about all this is that I don't want to create an eyesore right there in terms of outside storage because there is, we have, as I understand it, there are some people who are interested in doing some housing perhaps west of there. And so that's, I mean, I understand we may have an environmental issue that we're prevented from doing anything besides some kind of storage. But I just don't, I don't really like the idea of creating a yard that is there. But that's my.
Right, right now you can see where I have my pipe stored on the north side of the building. And then on the west side, you'll see I have a trailer there. It's kind of like a brick rash.
Right.
I would actually probably store my pipe in that area right there and not utilize that for my trailer and move my trailer over into the parking area in between the buildings in the new property we buy.
Okay.
The only thing I'd really plan on putting over to that empty lot would be my dirt pile, which right now I have in the property that's in the yellow. We are storing our dirt pile right now in private property.
Okay.
And I am limited what I can store. It's kind of hard to keep enough. When we have projects going on, keep it enough dirt because I'm limited of what I can store there.
Okay. Those are the concerns I have.
Okay, the, the thing that, I guess in an answer to Ms. Ogletree, the best thing to do would be to probably, you know, fence off that area right in that one larger building across the way so that it's not intrusive. You can put a fence of some type that's, makes it where it's hidden. And then the rest of that, I would like to see, or a portion of that, because the residents of our Space Grid program project, they really don't have any place to go outside and do anything. So I really believe if we're to maybe build make a small, mini, not necessarily a park for kids, but tables and chairs or someplace where they can go out and, you know, rest and relax. And I think something like that, I think if we took a portion of that, I think it would be wise to do that.
Be easy to incorporate to the river, too.
Yes, it would be. So it would be, so it'd be nice to have that. So Mr. Valentine, how can, how can we tie this up? And can we ask for a first right of refusal being that there is another interested party?
That's the reason we brought to council. I kind of, I'm, I'm hearing the consensus that I think I have to put down some earnest money
Okay.
to make the offer, but the offer would be based on environmental clearance.
Okay.
So.
Well, just I think from the discussion, I think you have your answer.
I think so.
Okay. Any other questions? Les, do you have any questions?
I don't, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, let's go into item three then. Memorandum of Understanding Between Los Angeles County, City of Trinidad, Nature Conservancy and Trust for Public Lands for the Fishers Peak Recreation Plan and Impact Study. Mr. Valentine, what do you have?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. The city, county, city, Trust for Public Lands and the Nature Conservancy, as you know, went forward and received a grant from DOLA for for this study. What I've included in the packet is some some documentation that we've been back and forth with the county and the two other agencies trying to have a memorandum of understanding because, you know, when you put all these government agencies together, we've got to have something in writing so that we can, you know, manage the grant. This is preliminary. The Nature Conservancy is still looking at it internally with the with their people. They have not gotten back, but we'd like to, once it's approved and everything, we'd like to move forward with it. So I wanted to get it in front of council for any thoughts they have. So that I also included in there an RFP or RFQ, Request for Qualifications, that's been put together to go out for consultants. Because we we have to go through basically the county and the city's procurement processes. The county is the lead agency on this this grant. They they took the lead on it. And I think I see Phil on on the call. Thank you, county, and thanks, Phil, for taking the lead on this one. But Phil and the county have been back and forth and and this is what they've come up with and we've come up with. And with that, once everything is good to go, I'd like to bring it to council for formal approval. So that's why I have it here on work session.
Mr. Dorncamp, I see you're on. Do you have anything to add? Mr. Dorncamp?
Is it working? Because our.
It's been working.
Our computers all just went down.
Oh, uh-oh.
Zoom crashed, I think. I was just headed down to see what was going on.
It's just us, though.
I think it's frozen.
Everybody's up there. Audra, can you hear us?
She's froze. She ain't.
I think it's frozen.
Bring everybody in live. They're seized up.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get some discussion going. Mr. Williamson.
I don't have any comment on this, Mayor.
Mr. Goodall.
Other than I appreciate the county taking the lead on this and everything looks to be good.
Good. Mr. DeBona.
Well, the Nature Conservancy has helped protect millions of Colorado acres since 1966, as well as thousands of of river miles. And I'm sure it's going to play a major role in the in the Fishers Peak State Park Sebaster Plan. But how much of an impact will it have maintaining the ecological sustainability for wildlife habitat and its population?
I think this is pretty much, this grant is mostly for the, to be able to to look at the, how to get from Trinidad to Fishers Peak. As far as what's going on at Fishers Peak is completely the other, CBW is is doing that.
Okay.
Do you still have Wi-Fi?
I think so.
Mr. Schuh.
Our Wi-Fi went down.
She's doing a good job with the county, so I don't have questions.
Ms. Ogletree.
Under scope of work, we have a community and public engagement and this consultant is going to be with a bunch of different groups in the city. One of them I felt like that was missing was the college. Is it listed as one of the people that they would engage with? And I think it would be a good idea to get the college in this conversation.
I have.
Let's wait for it. Ms. Ogletree had a question. Go ahead and repeat your.
Under the plan scope of work for the consultant, there's an aspect that's community and public engagement. And it has local residents and a bunch of different other things, but it doesn't specifically list the college. And I think the college would be a good party to have, present for that engagement.
Okay.
And then the other question, the only other question I had is what say will the city have in terms of reviewing these? Do you all sit down together and review them or is it just the county that's going to be reviewing?
No, yeah, all all entities will sit down once we get, you know, proposals in and we'll we'll start out where everybody will give them copies and read it, read through them and then kind of score them individually and then narrow it down. And there may be an interview process with, depending on how many we get, as as many as three. But yes, we'll have a say. I mean, we're all in this equal, so.
Okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
Now you did it.
You don't trust us?
Are we back? Audra, can you hear us?
It says it's muted.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good job. And Ms. Ogletree asked my question now is we want to make sure that we have a seat at the table for this discussion on this.
Definitely.
Any other, any other questions that come up? None? Okay. Let's go on to item four, Discussion Regarding New Public Health Orders. Mr. Valentine?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, Counsel, just wanted to kind of give you the heads up. We're, here we are in person. The county in your packet, the county, want to get the words right, sorry. They rescinded the local Los Angeles and Werfino County Public Health Order during their May 19 Board of Health Meeting. And the changes went into effect immediately. So basically, we're following the governor's new executive order. Just wanted to let council know that we're kind of slowly working our way to opening city, you know, facilities, the welcome center. The library has been open for a couple of weeks now. They're they're letting people come in for an hour and then then they have to leave. And downstairs, the utility office is still closed, but we'll be moving toward opening that up to let customers come in and pay their bills and get utility hookups without having to ring the bell and and have somebody come and screen you and do all that. So just wanted council to know that information. It's going to to help a lot. You know, we at the city are like on the second floor. We've had the doors locked, but anybody who comes and rings the bell, we let them in and we talk to them and, you know. So that means somebody has to get up, go to the door, bring them in.
So you don't have to grovel anymore to come in.
That's part of it, but we're we're trying to, we're trying to, a soft opening. No, we're just, we're just kind of letting people find out that, hey, I can actually go in.
And those, the doors were open when
Right.
we came in tonight.
Yeah, so and and I don't know if council has any questions or anything as we move forward, but I just wanted to get that out there. We've tried three different configurations here in council chambers. Tonight is another one. I don't, you know, know as we move forward. I know we had you on the dais and and there was some question of whether we were six foot apart and everything, so there's still that question. I think we're four and a half feet apart.
Close.
This configuration seems to work okay.
Yeah, but as we move forward and we have the press here, but as, you know, citizens want to come in and address council, we'll figure that out also.
I guess if citizens want to come in and, you know, I don't know if we could put a speaker and out, you know, and boy are out there. And maybe if they want to make a presentation, we can call them in. Yeah, it could be one, could be one way to to do that.
But.
Suck everything this way here. We'd have a room for futures across the back or something.
I think we've done a pretty awesome job about, you know, keeping citizens, their availability to meet with council or get on a meeting, so. But it will be great to put all this behind us.
Let's get some questions, if any. Mr. Williamson, have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I mean, I I think we're sort of subject to control. This this pass out of control, so we just have to keep following.
Mr. Goodall.
I think we're in a much more productive format now that we're back in person. It's much more productive.
Mr. DeBona.
I agree. I agree.
Mr. Schuh.
Yeah.
No questions. Ms. Ogletree.
I agree. I'll see you later.
Okay, anything else? That's it? Okay. On item four, Discussion Regarding the Retreat, and I'm going to discuss this a little bit. And I know there was a little bit of pushback the last time, you know, we, you know, Mr. Valentine and I laid out several items that we were discussing about having it on. And one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention, and I think is of utmost concern, is that anytime I'm with, I always talk about trying to have these items worked into a work session. There were, like I said, of course, like I mentioned, there were, we would not do all of these items in retreat. So we're looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. So there's 12 items that were on this list. And like I said, we probably would not have to do all of them. Here, kind of here lies the problem, is that if we try to fit one or two of these into a regular work session and into a.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is is there a way to see the 12 easily?
Uh, if, if you want a copy, yeah. Let me, let me give you the top copy. That's some stuff. And the reason why I say that's going to be difficult to do that without an actual retreat is I talked to Mr. Valentine a little bit. And one, the biggest problem is, is let's take a look at some of the most recent work sessions that we've had or even meetings. What happens is it seems like anytime that we want to try to plan a retreat or we want to have a work session, all these other little, other, not little things, other things crop up at the same time. I'll give you some examples. On April the 5th, this is April the 5th, there was a discussion regarding community, Center for Community Innovation, Northeast Mexico Educational Foundation. Consideration of Agreement with Urban Neighborhoods for the Storage of the Fox Theater. Discussion Regarding Historic Preservation Commission's Last and Landmarking of Old Buildings. Update Regarding the New Alt Mine. Update Regarding State Legislation by Debbie Wadner. Then on May the 10th, we have first quarter marijuana allocations. And then we had the discussion regarding private activity bonds for the rest of apartments. And we briefly discussed the housing incentives discussion. We had a grants and project update. On April the 26th, that was when we had that housing work session. And this goes back, I just pulled a few of these. These went, went back to January the 25th. We had discussion of the mod traffic code. They had discussion demanding the allocation of the city's marijuana sales tax. And discussion regarding the Trinidad Police Department's marketing unit. And like I said, those were just a few of the discussion items that I was able to, that I pulled up real quick to show you people on council that I think that it's going to be really necessary that we have a true retreat. Because what happens is like Mr. Valentine and I discussed, is these things, besides what's on this list that you're looking at here, these items, they all crop up in the middle somewhere. And they're trying to prepare just those items, not the items that are even listed on this retreat. We're not even touching these items on the retreat. And I feel that it's really better if we were to either invest a full day or two half days to try to get some of these done. We may be able to take some of these and and put them into a regular work session. I think that that might work to try to narrow this down. Because if we were to, if we were to try to tackle, let's say, two of these items, it would take us, you know, six work sessions, which would equal to another three months' work. Over three months timeframe. So half of this stuff wouldn't even get approached until August sometime. So that's a, that's a real concern. So I feel like, and in talking to Mr. Valentine, he and I think staff want some direction from us and from these particular items that are on this list. These are items that we've been discussing for, some of these items, we've been discussing for years. And then more items are going to be cropping up all the time for work sessions. So that's why I feel that it is essential that we do have a sit down amongst ourselves and give council direction as how to proceed and when to proceed with some of these items and what's, you know, what comes first, what comes second, and on and on. Mr. Valentine, is that kind of the way you see it in a sense?
Yes, Mayor. I appreciate that. What I wanted to hear from council is kind of, kind of their, their direction consensus on whether this is a one day, whether, and I know we sat down with this, this is a list that we had for the retreat that was going to happen back in
April.
April of 2020, pre-COVID. So you can see we've knocked off a few of them, but we've added some, so. I don't know if this is all of council, if there's anything to add to that. The retreat is going to take some time to put enough information to make it viable. So we may have to skip a work session to 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 really put something together. I don't know, you know, if it would be split or or otherwise. So that's, I put this on the agenda just to to have this discussion.
In the, in in June, we have that extra week, that fifth week timeframe. And working that out to where we don't have, staff doesn't have to prepare any additional information. I think we could work around that timeframe.
We don't have an extra meeting in January. We have a regular meeting on the 1st, a regular meeting on the 15th, but then. Oh, I think it happened June.
There's an extra week.
But there are losses in June.
Yeah, there's five Tuesdays in June.
Yeah. So there's an extra week there that we can utilize this in another one if we have to, so. So anyway.
And let's talk about May, we're Memorial Day. We're not going to have one then.
Right. Exactly. Why not? Come on. You take our fish balls and your fishing竿. Anyway, after I give them, like I said, I've given you my reasons why I think it's really critical to try to knock some of these off to give council to, for us to know what we're doing and and also for staff to be able to have some ideas to what our, what our requests are.
So and and I would add that this was staff and the mayor and just everything that's going on now. If you have anything to add, please let us know.
You know, I know it's an inconvenience for some of you, especially you like Mr. Williamson, he works, Mr. DeBona, he works, right? I know you work part-time or whatever. You know, Mr. Goodall, you know, you take care of your park. And so it is an inconvenience. But unfortunately, as council members, that's something that we.
My concerns is not about my inconvenience. When I run for this, I made myself available for this position because that's part of what comes with the, with being on city council. I'm more concerned with the workload of staff and pulling department heads out of the field and everything else. I think there's got to be a better way. If we just took. If we just took and split our two work sessions, one for a retreat-type setting, and then one on stuff that comes up, and we, I think we could knock it out in a couple of sessions, and it may run longer than our normal meeting. I still think that's an opportunity for us to deal with this. If there was, if we needed someone, a department head or something, we could try to work it into a schedule we set up for the meeting where they could appear for discussion on that specific topic. I think there's got to be a better way than just pulling everybody out for either two half-days or one full day. If we can do it in a work session setting, dedicate one work session out of our two in the month strictly to handle these items.
Mr. Valentine, do you think it'd be difficult to pull staff, you know, some of these department heads off for this meeting?
Yes. It, it, it will, if, if they sit through the whole thing, which at times I don't, you know, it would be good for them to get council direction, but maybe we could bring them in, you know, just as, as they come in.
I have a question, if you don't mind, Mike. The mayor had mentioned you were looking for direction, and sorry to put you on the spot like this. What, I mean, specifically, what direction are you looking for? Like, as, as a hard example, like this Capital Improvement Project, five-year specific plan. What, what would you expect us to give to you on that?
Right. Well, your, your thoughts on, on where, you know, the five-year plan for CIP projects come? Just, we...
Would it, wouldn't, I mean, is it possible that the department heads can work with you? I mean, is that, that was part of your plan? I think it was a super effective plan. And I want to say publicly, I, I take umbrage at the fact of you mentioning that, that I, I'm, I'm not ready to share my time. I mean, like Rusty, when I did this, I take this job seriously. I mean, it's not, it's not that I'm worried about an investment of time. I'm not. I, I think that we really need to look at the deployment of city staff's time. And to split it over two days, you're just multiplying the mobilization effort there. So it's nothing about, about my time investment here. It's, it's about if it's good use of that time. But my question is, for the capital improvement plans, talking specifically for that as an example, your idea was to put department heads in place, and I think that was a really great plan. It has, you know, really borne out a lot of, you know, there's a lot of good things that have been borne out of that idea. But a further, further utilization of that would be to have you and your department heads work together and produce their own five-year capital improvement plan. Because I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to sit here and talk about anything to that, in my mind. I mean, water mains, electric poles, they know the plans, they know their jobs, and it may be good to present to us, and we can have a good look at the five-year plan. And I think a lot of these are pretty, pretty similar, or same ilk. I mean, outdoor recreation, we're moving more towards having that department. You, you guys can come up with recommendations to show us, and we can steer that. I mean, that's using the subject matter of experts for the subject matter. And then that, that makes further, you know, more concise use of everybody's time. That's, that's my thoughts.
I would, I would turn it around to council. As, as city manager and staff, we're trying to put together a retreat, but my question here today is, what does council want out of the retreat? You know, what, where are we going with this, you know? Come out with a mission statement and, and our objectives that are on the wall, and make sure everything fits within those guidelines, or I...
Well, what I see, it's, it's a, it's a process of being strategic.
Well, if you want to keep ahead of the game, like you said, a lot of issues and small minor details surmount into major issues, then I guess my discretion would be, if that's what's going to materialize to maybe two half-day sessions or a full-day session. And with staff, if staff's okay with that, if they're not too inundated with the daily routines that they do, then I guess that's all right.
Mr. Shu.
Oh, I, I, you know, we discuss all this stuff in the day, and that's still too much stuff to discover.
Oh, it is. Like I said, we could pair it...
It is ridiculous.
If we could pair this down, that's...
You know, downtown parking, there's not much we could do about that. There isn't a lot of things.
There's a big discussion among...
Where we're going to park, what's the discussion?
And that's the whole idea is to...
But where's the discussion? Give me an example.
Well, discussion is, for instance, what do we do with this property over here?
Well, we, I've asked, I've talked to Mike about that a couple of times.
There's the, the property where the old, the old...
That's what I'm saying, is what, what, are we going to do it or what? That's, I mean, that's a question. And the same thing with relocation of the Walcom Center. You don't have much choice. Where are we going to put it? I mean, those are the things that, for us, I think is necessary to... You're going to present it and give us the information where we can do it, and we either vote for it or we don't. I mean, that's, that's the point.
Well, the relocation...
You know, you can discuss all this stuff all you want.
Well, you have a good example of the relocation of the Walcom Center. And what's going to probably come out of this traffic study might, that might probably help. So that would be, that could be one item that could be eliminated off of this list. But like I said, this is just a list that's bit, this is, that one down the thing on this list all over here.
You know, you're going to have, no matter what we do with any of this, we're still going to have stuff come up during the weeks, the months, and it's the little stuff, big stuff. I mean, you got to face it back, things are going to change, and we're going to end up doing that with the work sessions. And like I say, I would be in favor of adding a couple of these items every week to the work session and go from there. I, I think it's really tough on staff, and I think we're putting a lot more pressure on them. And, you know, from my experience, we had three, two or three of these retreats when I was on the council before. And I'm not saying that's an example, but I'm just saying that this is probably, and I will say this, a better council than what I was on, because we had a lot of conflict. And we never accomplished anything. We just spent a whole day arguing, and it turned out to be silly. And it was just a waste of time. And I'm not saying that will happen here, but those are things to consider that, you know, and I, and I still think the priority and pick the stuff that we need to have done this week or next week, not down a month down that way, to get that stuff done. And I think that would be the way to work it the best way we can.
Mr. Shu, I think it was in 2018, we did have a retreat.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't on it.
And we, we weren't on, but we had it at the La Quinta. And it was very productive. I can, were you on?
I was on, and I thought it was at the Holiday Inn. We had it there in the back at the hall, one or the other anyway.
Yeah. But anyway, it was, it was there, and it was a very productive session. And what it was, is that we had all of our directors there, and it was just good discussion from council and direction. So, Mr. Sogut.
I see a retreat as a high-level conversation that doesn't necessarily involve staff beyond you, Mike, because you are our sole employee, except for city attorney. You are who we look to to accomplish what the city wants to have happen. And I think it would be a mistake for us to bring in department heads and for us to ask them those questions. They answer to you, and they don't answer to us. So what I would envision that we would be doing is talking about where we're heading as a city, what we understand are large problems that we have that need to be addressed. And that's what I'm presuming you want from us in terms of what priorities. Not do we put a parking lot here or there or wherever, but for us to say, okay, within five years, here's what we envision is going to be happening here. Here's how many people we'd like to see living here. Here's how many businesses we'd like to see settled here. Here's what we want in our infrastructure, so that you have guidance in, in how you're prioritizing how you do your job. That's the, I, that's what I think a retreat is for.
You know, I think that's really, you bring up a really good point in maybe not necessarily having directors there. They, anybody that's involved with some of these items here, if those that we select, if there is a director that has to give us information, maybe, Mr. Valentine, maybe they could prepare that information prior to and not have to be there. And then when we have that discussion, then you take it back to them and say, this is what council has discussed as to what they would like to see. That, to me, sounds like a good idea. What do you guys think? I know you, what do you think about that particular, of doing it that way?
The thing that I would say is, any, I mean, to go into it, I think we should have some plan making sure that's an actionable item afterwards, but, I mean, it still doesn't really alter the fact that it's all, you can accomplish it from work sessions. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a different setting than a work session. There's, I mean, there's no defining characteristics different than a work session. That's my opinion.
There is. Because I've been in, I've, I've been in a retreat, and there is a difference. Mr. Goodall.
I still feel, you know, I rely on Mike to say, y'all, we've talked about trying to skip some work sessions. Y'all are hammered. You got so much on your plate. I rely on you heavily. If you want a retreat and you think it would be beneficial and not detrimental to your time that could be spent more effectively somewhere else, then I'll rely heavily on what your opinion of a retreat or to handle it at work session, and I'll let it go it down.
We have one council member that's not here, and, you know, I know she has expressed, and first I'm not speaking for her, but she has expressed that feeling that she would like to have a retreat. But you might reach out to her and see what she thinks.
Okay.
If you can do that, and then make a decision on that.
I, I appreciate feedback. I think we could mold something in where staff is not, you know, taken in. I like that Councilwoman Holletree's concept of, you know, that's what I, I feel like council wants to give to me, and that's what I think I need from council, is...
Well, actually, there may be a couple of staff, you know, like Laura Fosse, you can maybe at that retreat. You know, like, that would be something, you know, total people are.
Not to interrupt you, but if you don't mind, we hired you, and we, we kind of rely on you to bring up what we think is, needs to be done.
Sure.
And I, I, I don't know if that's a big part of a retreat or not, but we, we expect you and, and, and your people that, that are underneath you to bring all this stuff up to us. And that, it is tough to, to do all this, so I, I think I agree with Rusty. Your judgment should be a big varying on what, what goes on.
One thing, one thing I'd really like to hear from you is whether or not you think the current structure of the administration is sufficient, or whether you think you, and you see that within a certain amount of years, you're going to need a new assistant city manager. Or what you see, as you're seeing all, how busy you are, what are the holes that we don't see because we're not on the ground? So that was, that's a conversation that we need to...
That's true, and like I said, you know, where we are today is not where we were three years ago or five years ago, or even 10 years ago. You know, and where we're going is completely different. So I think at a high level conversation, that discussion needs to be had. And that's, you know, I'm agreeing with you. So anyway, check with, okay, Ms. Regal, and then you make that decision as well. Okay, Mr. Valentine, I think that was another item or two that, an item that you wanted to bring up.
Yeah, there, there's several things have come up. I, I guess, very first one, hopefully you were able to check your emails. There was a flurry of back and forth, and I believe Debbie Wagner is hopefully on the call, and she may have some input, but the Southwest Chief, not the Southwest Chief, the Front Range Rail Bill, Senate Bill 238, there was a letter that was prepared on behalf of Trinidad City Council urging support. We kind of went through this after the last meeting discussion and several iterations of the bill. I just want to make sure council is aware of it before we move forward. I don't know if council was able to review that. There are, Debbie provided several options. We can amend the, the, the letter to the state that the city is concerned about the amount of sales tax, and, and they added an amendment to address that issue. They, they want to actually see if, they would go for federal funding to reduce the tax burden. There was several iterations of, of changes that they would go for federal funding first before the tax burden. So I, I just, before I send the letter off, I didn't want to send it off, you know, and not get full support from council or how, how this was going to go. And I would open it for discussion, Mayor.
I'm going to go ahead and give a little bit of information on this. Like I said, this Front Range District, I really believe is important because we know the population growth in the near future and even down the road to 2050 is going to, they're thinking that there's going to be an addition 70 million people in the state of Colorado by the year of 2050, or 2045, somewhere like that. So we need to begin to look down the road at what transportation is going to look like, and how to transfer people, to transport people all the way up and down, not only the Front Range, but Wyoming is interested in partaking in this, but also it's taking it further south into New Mexico, which right now it does, but the way it comes is comes from Chicago to Lhana, through here, and then down south. We're looking for at some point in the future where it would be a direct line when it's all said and done, because what's going to happen first is it's going to go to Pueblo, up to Fort Collins, and then back and back around. The long term is to get a straight line between Pueblo and Trinidad to eliminate that, those, those people that want to go, go south. We know this is a long-term goal. It's not going to be immediate. We need that seat at the table, which is something that I did, not, not this weekend, but the weekend before last. Worked with Debbie and also worked with Sal Pace on this. There was a question concerning the, I'm thinking of the...
Eminent Domain.
Eminent Domain, but they changed the language on it, because one of the questions that came up from the county commissioners was, it said that, that the executive session is where the decision would be made to go for eminent domain. But now it's changed that it would be in public, that, that if there's any eminent domain, it would be made in public. I don't really see, eminent domain is so rarely used. I mean, we saw it here in Trinidad back in the 80s with Pinho Canyon, but that was a federal issue. At the state issue, the only way I could see that would happen along with the Front Range Rail would be, give you a good example, and I'm not sure if I gave you this example the other day. Let's say Almora wanted a train station. So it's off of the main rail line. So what would happen, discussion would be, you'd have to have discussion with Almora and all the adjacent property owners that would be affected by the rail system, to see if they are for it or not. Try to work with them to be paid, they would, they would have to get paid fair market value anyhow. But work with them up front anyway, and that's what has to happen anyhow. So that, the ultimate thing would be, is if they have to take that, maybe it could happen. But they still would have to get paid fair market value for their property. But I don't see where, around this area where that would happen. I just don't, I just don't see, because that straight line coming from Pueblo to here in Trinidad, there's nothing in between. The only place that would have a, a station, if any, would be Walsenburg.
Mayor, is it, is it known the Front Range Rail is anticipated to be new rail? Are they using existing rail?
That will be something that would have to be figured out as we go along, because Burlington Northern owns, owns that rail system. There may have to be some additional sightings for, for... There may have to be some additional sidings for, for trains to pass by each other. The system would probably be upgraded, because I believe right now it is a welded or bolted rail system, and they are slowly replacing across everywhere, they're replacing with welded rail, which they feel is more efficient, and it doesn't create, doesn't have any
But it isn't anticipated to follow the same basic rail, Ben?
I believe that's probably, I don't, it won't change, if, if it would be side by side of it, and if you, if you go along I-25, you could see where the rail already has, you know, pretty good room on either side anyhow. So I, I just, I just personally, I just feel like this is, I, I think the letter is good. And as far as funding goes, it is going to be absolutely essential that we try to use and get federal funding. Currently, we have, the president that we have, as everybody knows, is Amtrak Joe. He is very adamant about putting money toward a rail system, not only here, but across the entire country. Amtrak has already stated that this area here, from New Mexico to Wyoming, is one of their most current priorities that they're looking at. They are really looking at this area to, to do something with, so they are very adamant. So a combination of federal funding, which the district, the, the board of directors on that district, would have to make sure that we go after all the money available for federal funding, along with Amtrak money, along with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Trail, also UPP, which is up further north. So these would all be funds that would have to be investigated before we would even go, or they would even go toward a fast for a sales tax. So it would all have to be, you know, taken to the extreme before that.
They're concerned about a sales tax over extended period of time, but is there a timeframe that they're talking about?
Well, if you, if you look at the, at the bill, it says that the, I forget exactly who, at the state level, if there was a tax, every two years, the, I'm not sure if it's the Finance Committee or whoever, the Transportation Committee would be looking at that bill to make sure that it's doing its work. If it didn't, what, if it was not doing its work, I think they have, they would have the authority to say, no, you have to put this sales tax off. That's the way I read the bill. So there is, there are some guidance, or some side markers there that has some control.
It's nine tenths of a cent for 40 years.
Eight tenths, eight tenths.
Eight tenths.
It says up to eight tenths.
Up to, up to eight tenths.
Up to eight tenths.
The problem is, I still stand by what I said before is, if they don't get any funding anywhere else, that tax goes into place in its 40 years of tax. And with our infrastructure, the age it is, and we have major catastrophe in this town trying to pass another tax, the CIP is a perfect example, which barely, I barely got that passed, me and Pat and Penny Saidi pushed that hard, and it barely passed. If this goes through and gets added to the sales tax, I'm afraid we will never pass another CIP or a bond issue if we had a major catastrophe. And someone said, well, if something big happens, people would just have to go for it. Well, you've been here forever. You've been here forever, you've been here forever, and you, that's not the way it works in Trinidad. I've been here 30 years, and I've seen that is not the way it works. The people in Trinidad will tell you, find another way. And it scares the hell out of me, the long term, for the, looking out for the community of Trinidad with any bond issues, if this goes through, they don't get funding elsewhere, the funding is minimal, and we get a big tax increase, passing anything else in the future if we have a big problem. It scares me, and I feel I have to say this right now again to everybody, I, we speak as a voice of one. Majority says, letter's good, send it off, put my name on there, whatever, because we speak as a voice of one, but I have to express my concerns, and that is my fear with this. And, and I don't think it's going to follow the same rail, because this has to be a high speed rail for it to be effective. People are not going to ride a train at 60 miles an hour going north from back and forth. And for it to be a high speed rail, that rail cannot run on the way it's running where that existing rail runs. It's going to have to go on the east side of the highway in some places to get a high speed rail in to make this effective. So I haven't seen the updates like you, Mayor. I haven't read all the new stuff. I've been meaning to reach out to Deb and ask her to keep me on any amendments to it. I'd appreciate anything to be shared. I am more than happy to read through and have my mind changed, but right now, with the way the bill reads, my mind has not been changed, and I feel a need to express that.
Did you read, did you read the amendments that were in there?
I have not seen any amendments that came in, but
I think Mike sent them off to everybody.
All right.
Well, you know, I, I think you were incorrect as far as not utilizing the, the present bed for rail for high speed. Now, high speed in other parts of the world are 300, 400 miles an hour.
Yeah.
We'll never achieve that here in this country. We will achieve maybe up to probably, maybe 110 miles an hour, which the current rail system that they are actually putting in place now will reach those capacities. Right now, they'll reach up to like 70, 90 miles an hour. So going forward, who knows what the future will hold? As far as, will it need to be a higher speed? We don't know. I think that they will be able to, the district will utilize the rail system that they're, that's in place to make sure that it works properly. There may be a few places that maybe need to be reconfigured, but it's not going to be reconfigured all, the entire length of the property. What?
My question, I'm just not quite understanding. They're proposing a district that's five miles to the east and west of I-25, is that where?
Yes.
And that's the only people, the people live within that, or ones who are taxed with regard to this?
Yes, from New Mexico border to the Wyoming border, but it incorporates, if you look at the entire bill, it incorporates all of Alpasso County or Alpasso or Colorado Springs. It also incorporates all of Douglas County, all of the Denver areas, part of Wild County, which is, and it extends a little bit further than five, than five miles, so it, it also extends into those areas, even though it's not five miles. But in this area, it will go five miles from, five miles from where it's at right now, from I-25.
I just understand, why is it not just a statewide kind of tax? Because it's going to benefit the whole state and the whole region. Why is it just limited to that area?
Because the reason being is that the people on the west progressive part of the state would have difficulty tying in. Now, there is, there's, there's talk about maybe trying to do something in the future from Alamosa, you know, tying in somewhere, but that is way down.
Well, I heard they ever use their own pros on that side of the street. We just all take those things.
I understand that there is some concern, but I think if we are to look at the future of Trinidad, I understand the sales tax thing, but also understand that we need to be thinking forward, just like everything else. If, let, let's take for instance, Fisher's Peak. If all of a sudden I brought into you guys four years ago and said, costs too darn much money, and we're going to have to put out so much money, and said, and just couldn't see it, it wouldn't happen.
I, I like the concept, I, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I don't know that I like that narrow kind of perspective on the taxation.
Yeah. Now, there talks about a two-mile distance from I-25. And the two-mile is for those, any, any community along the way that would want a rail, or a rail station. That's the purpose of that two-mile, what we're talking about. Cannot extend further than that.
Are we still looking 10 years down the road for that link from Pueblo to Trinidad? Isn't that kind of the timeframe they're looking at?
I think so, but here's the thing, Rusty, that I'm thinking about is that we're waiting to see with this American Recovery Act, if the state of Colorado is going to get like $2.4 billion, I believe, or $2.2 billion for transportation, and I think it's, from what I understand, it's supposed to be dedicated mostly for the rail system. Now, one of the things that I've been talking, and I have support from some of our other commissioners already, for the majority actually, is that, that money, a lot of it will be used for that through car service going to, to Pueblo and up north. And while I talk to them and say, why can't we take a portion of that money and install PTC, which is Positive Train Control, which would be needed, and install Positive Train Control between Pueblo and Trinidad, it would give us a very serious footfall to say, maybe it would be shorter term. And that's why I'd have to take some of this money to, for that particular purpose. And I think that would happen because the current bill, the, we just received $2.5 million over the last week from the Transportation Committee for the current commission that we have right now. And of course, we're going to go after federal grants and stuff like this, so all of this money will give us some leverage to be able to say, we have a citizen's seat at the table, and we feel like we need to go down the shore to, to, so that Trinidad will be impacted at some point.
So I'm not hearing whether there's a consensus or not, but and I know you guys said you pay me the big bucks, so figure that out, but
That's a little cloudy water.
So, yeah. Several options that Debbie added in her email was, here where it says Congress has created major funding opportunities, we can add a, a line in there that says, city council believes it is of paramount interest for the state to obtain as much federal funding as possible to reduce the tax burden to the taxpayers. And we could add that into the letter, just saying. And then she also said, in the bill, it requires a majority of registered voters of the district to grant taxing authority.
I think that's already supposed to be in there.
That, that is in there. She said that's in there, so just, just as a reference, I guess, that would be everybody
In that district, in that district.
In that district voting.
Let's say they put, let's say the district proposes a tax and it, it fails.
Right.
Doesn't improve.
And then the last thing I want to put out there that she mentioned is, if council members still have concerns about the bill, it is appropriate for the mayor or anyone else to send the letter personally to testify on behalf. That's a tough one, because it will look like if it comes from the office of mayor, it'll look like, you know, city agrees, so I, I'm out.
Be part of the commission, I've been asked, you know, to testify tomorrow, any of your two thirds.
And I think Debbie, if you're online, maybe you can lay out the timeline. If city council has a consensus to move forward, we need to get this letter amended if needed and send up to you via email for tomorrow's hearing. Correct?
She may not be on, but I think
No, she said she's on by phone.
I think she was correct about that.
We'll go around the room, poll the room, ask a consensus.
I want, I want to make it clear, I, I definitely agree with Rusty. I mean, with, with, unless they can give ironclad guarantees that, that we're not going to incur that tax, and, and they can't, and eminent domain, I'm adamantly against it. It's another form of government overreach, I mean, and then the end results are going to have a rail system that's run by the government, and Amtrak, they can't run that properly.
It's going to be run by the district.
That's a government entity, I mean, you, you, in my opinion, you don't want government running enterprise.
I mean, the other thing too, you talk about eminent domain, and anytime that there is any mention of a taxing district, that language has to be, it's in our language, it's in the county's language, I believe, it's in, it's in the state's language, in the federal language, any government agency has eminent domain as part of their language.
And the property owners and suburbs didn't have a choice when the dam was built.
So they put the interstate through this country, a lot of people didn't have a choice.
Right.
Anyway, Mr. Bone, what are your thoughts? Mr. Shu?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Rusty about that. I'm not for the tax, but I'm, I'm kind of like to see the railroad, but I think it's, it's an issue that's going to be a, a really big issue from now on, because railroads are hard to deal with no matter what, and it's going to be kind of tough to get any funding to get Burlington Northern, many of them guys to use it rails, but I, I'd be for it outside.
You'll be okay with the letter, Tom? So, Holm Tree?
I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime kind of opportunity that we have here, and I think that it's short-sighted to not recognize that we need this kind of connection, being this far out from, from major cities, and I, I like the philosophy behind it, that it's going to provide greater opportunities for people, places to live, and create expanded cities outside of Denver and Colorado Springs. So, yeah, it takes sacrifice and it takes public will to do something like that. I don't have, I'm not sure about the reluctance to get eminent domain, I mean, that's something that government does all the time, when it has to put land to a public use. If a person gets fair market value, it's not, you know, it's, but it's like being, living in a society, but I don't have a problem with that. I support it.
So that gives you your answer?
I think
I think
With amendments or?
I think with those amendments, I think they're fine.
With the amendments, for sure.
Okay, I'm going to bring up one other item, and this has to do with passenger rail with the current commission. Last year, we were asked to sponsor the, it was the bill grant last year, and it failed. We did not get that last year. But they have changed it now to the RACE grant, which stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. That's the, what RACE stands for today. A little bit of background, just to let you know that through this entire process over the past, I forget when it started, 20, can't remember exactly, this is money that's been received from the federal government. This is throughout the entire United States. $8.935 billion has been distributed to the TEGR grants, RACE grant, or the bill grants that we had so far. Currently, this RACE grant, they will give up to $25 million for the, for this grant. That's what we've been able to apply for in the past, and that's what we have received with the current commission, and they are competitive grants, so it, nothing to say that we will not succeed again, but we, we failed last year. I think there's a little bit better chance this year to get this RACE grant, and so I believe that it's essential. And what this RACE grant will do is there is 35 miles left of upgrades between Lahana and Trinidad, and this RACE grant would fill in that gap, if we're successful, to be able to upgrade the rail system to where the rest of the rail system is. And credit grants have already been appro, the friends have been appropriated for the Positive Train Control between here and there, so I believe that's already been done. So all that has to be done is just the rails, I believe, just the rail system.
Yeah, so, question?
Yes.
On the construction, I mean, on Amtrak and that, when they were getting all these grants and that, has the rail, I know it's, it's been repaired from here, has it been repaired from Santa Fe down to where they were having issues?
It's gone as far as Lamy, New Mexico.
Which is Santa Fe.
Yeah.
That's the Santa Fe station, Lamy is.
So what's, what's happening with that project from there on?
Ah, that would be up to New Mexico and people down that, that area.
But isn't that all part of the same grants?
No.
No, they, they, they have to go for their own grants?
They would, they would have to establish their own probably commission, like we have our commission. The commission that we have now was introduced back in 2017 by, at that time, Senator Crowder and a quote, other people, and that's where that started from, and it's, you know, had
So does that have a big bearing on Amtrak itself, running the line? If they don't get that repaired down that way?
I don't know if they've done any repairs they made.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just kind of curious. I know they were having issues with that.
I, I can get, because as a matter of fact, we have a rail commission meeting this Friday, and I can get that answer for you.
Mayor, before we get off that subject, so the request was from Rick Klein and, and the commission that the city sponsored that.
and, and the commission, that the city sponsored that. We, we've done that previously, so I don't see an issue sponsoring.
The only thing we have to do is if it's successful, we put toward twelve, twelve point five, twelve thousand five hundred dollars toward it. And of course, uh, Lahana does too, Pueblo I think does, and who else?
Just like we did last.
Just like we did, we've done in the past.
Okay, good.
So, any comments about going, sponsoring the, Mr. Bond?
I think it's a good thing.
Mr. Shu?
Yeah.
Hey. Williams, sir?
No.
Okay. I guess Rusty's okay, and I won't get it.
Okay, good. Two thumbs up. Okay, two other things.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
What a row.
I know. So, um, might as well just have a retreat tonight.
I mean, there's a secret area.
So, uh, I was contacted a while back by, uh, C dot, um, C dot personnel. Shashana Lou, the director of C dot, was wanting to do a listening tour around the state, just to, you know, walk about and see what communities are doing and, and what's happening. Well, um, she is in the midst of trying to push through a transportation bill. Uh, she won't be coming around. I got that call, and on Wednesday at four, the, we'll be meeting with, uh, Rich Zamora and Nathan Lindquist, uh, staff, at the staff level. They said, you know, we, we just wanna hear from staff, so, um, I think after the bill passes, Shashana will want to come back down and I will let the council know, but right now, it's just the staff.
Will T. Bo be at that meeting?
I don't think so, no. I think it's, it's more, uh, at the staff level, and they want to report back for now. Yeah, so. Um, and then the second thing, um, just if you haven't heard, um, you know, we, we got a heck of a ring. Uh, we were notified, uh, today by the State Engineers Office, Division of Water, that the floodwaters that came into Trinidad Lake, by agreement, they're required to release within seventy-two hours.
Wow. Five thousand acre feet.
The last time they did this, they, they opened the gates up, and we, we were at fifteen hundred C F S, and we were topping bridges out east. Um, they're gonna try for half that amount this time, and, and if you look at the rivers...
It's high.
It's, it's high and it's running. Um, so, um, they're hoping to release that, and I'm sure with all the, the debris and everything that's there, that, that may cause them some issues at the, the release points, but, um, for three days, you, you're gonna have that river roaring like it is.
Unless, there is a button to that.
Unless.
What's, what's the reservoir out east?
Oh, unless, uh, John Martin...
John Martin fills up.
If John Martin spills, then we can hold back.
That's it. Then it becomes a free flow, and we don't have to let it go.
Where, where is John Martin at this point in time?
I do not know that, Mayor.
I just hope they get dumped out east. I'm telling you, I hope they get dumped out.
Yeah, they're, they're the primary red dragon.
It'd be nice to store a little bit of that water.
Yes, it would. Let the, let the silt settle.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty brown.
Anything else, sir?
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Anything else from council?
Oh, one more thing, sorry.
What?
Apologize. Uh, before you leave, please stop by Audra's office. We've, she's prepared a letter for Kim and Joyce Cucho on the farmer's market, and we'd like everybody to sign that. So, I, that's all I have.
Any other items for work sessions?
No, I have no items to add.
Shu, go on.
Well, you know, list is, no, I'm good.
Add to it.
I'm good.
I have nothing.
I'll get back to you.
Okay, I'll give the last.
Mr. Now, Davey?
Mayor, I don't have anything, unless you want me to report on House Bill thirteen oh one. I, I don't think it's necessary now. I know you've been asking about that.
Right. Uh, yeah, that's, that's just where you're at, cultivation.
Exactly.
Because it's still going to actually, that was first reading today, I believe.
You know, I thought that also, and I spoke to Debbie right before this meeting, and she said, um, it was going before the Appropriations Committee, and I think that it's past Appropriations Committee, so I think it's a little further down the road now, um, but, but it is kind of meandering through. Audra and I spoke to Jason Shorlin today. He's one of the brothers that was before you recently on the, uh, on the new cultivation exactly, um, licenses, and he was in favor of it, didn't have really strong feelings. Just so everybody knows, the, the gist of this would allow people, if there was gonna be some kind of really big weather event, people would be able to pull up their plants, their outdoor plants that are being cultivated, and move them to another facility off premises, and, and be able to have it, you know, stored there, uh, basically, again, if it was such a cataclysmic weather event, that they decided to pull up their plants.
Like last night, they had a couple nights ago.
Right, well, you know, it's hard to know. I mean, you don't know if you're gonna get hail until it starts hailing. You know, the, the thing I think that, that brought this about was the, the snow freezing since September seventh of last year.
They lost lots of money.
Right, but even then, you don't necessarily know how cold it's gonna be. I mean, you may, but you may not. And, and then if you do, of course, you have to make the determination whether or not you're gonna pull your plants up and do that early. The Shorlin brothers were telling us that they were able to salvage a lot of their plants because they have their, their MIPS license, and they were able to turn a lot of that product into, um, waxes or resins. There, there's one primary thing.
From Elsal Labs, they just reviewed it, where?
Exactly. But they still were out, they, um, they approximate half a million dollars in cultivation. So, but one of the areas of concern is whether the, the municipalities would learn a lot of, excuse me, lose a lot of revenue if there was a really catastrophic weather event. Um, and I, I don't think that's the case. The other one is whether or not insurance could kick in, and that doesn't apply because it's still not allowed federally. I'm talking a lot for the event that I owe the thin of us not to report on.
There is one thing I would wanna bring up about that, thirteen oh one. Uh, you know, there was a question, there was gonna be a fee schedule or fee structures from the state, uh, last Friday night, and I talked to Sal Pace, because he was one of the ones that's helping run this bill. And I asked him, I said that, you know, there was a fee structure, and he said that, being that we are home rule, that we have our own ordinance in place, so that we could change our ordinance at any time. If we wanna decrease the fund, if we wanna increase the fund, we wanna do away with it, whatever we wanna do, that is up to city council. We have, and that would be for statutory towns in Amtrak. I asked Les to check into that to make sure that was true. Uh, he's been trying to get home, the C M L attorney that is, that's that Bo Clarine, I forget what her last name is.
Clarine.
Yeah, and she is going to, to get that answer, to make sure it's accurate, so. If you guys saw that bill and you saw that, that's, that was the, the answer I got from Sal Pace.
I think the only bill that had opposition was T H C level limits, because that had trouble in other states too, but, and what it's gonna do is push more people instead of planting it in the ground, go to the soft pot style. I mean, it's gonna change, it'll definitely change.
I don't think there's anything on that on the T H C levels in this particular...
It got shut down, it never made it through nothing. When they, it got tried to introduce out of Boulder or somewhere, and it got shut down immediately.
And there was another question a while back, and I can remember you asked about that, if there was going to be a concern, there was a concern if the, um, state of Colorado was going to, there was some talk about maybe increasing the tax to fund schools. That is non-existent, it's just, it, there was no first base on that.
It's just funny to think that, like, whatever the allowable level of that had gone through that legislation, like sixty percent T H C is not enough. Like, as high as a person gets, it was sixty percent.
What they're trying to do is cap it, like, why it didn't pass Oklahoma and New Mexico sooner, both of them tried to put it between a thirteen and eighteen percent was the highest level of T H C, which is on the low end, so. And that's what they were trying to push through here, to lower the acceptable levels of concentrates, because, well, you, you heard about it for a while, you don't hear about it too much now, but pot tourists coming in, buying a pack of gummies and thinking you eat the whole box, then they're in the emergency room seeing pink towels or something, freaking out.
They did say, I think, that Governor Polis had signed, uh, I'm not sure if executive order or whatever, because the, the legislation that we have in place now, they can buy up to the mountains. And I think to be able to compete with this thing with, uh, New Mexico, I think he signed something in place that they could match that to two ounces.
To two ounces, like the medical side.
Speaking of more across the border.
Just kidding, I did not just say that.
Anyway, that's, uh, that's our work session, and I wanted to say thanks for the good discussion, and, uh, we'll see you next time.
Agreed. Great discussion. Yes, sir. Stop at Audra's.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I gotta stop at Audra's.